We started this morning's work session, it's Monday, June sixteenth at nine o'clock in the morning. And we're talking today, basically a single topic. Is our discussion today is to review the Lake County E nine one one Director Job Description and Discussion on Potential Employee Classification and Recruitment.
Perfect.
Thanks, Coach.
All you.
So, uh, let's, I guess, I, I thought we'd just start off with an, uh, hey, good morning. Um, just talk about the overall structure of dispatch and, yeah. And then we'll break it down into, um, the Director Job Description and some of the things we've been doing, um, and then just talk about some recruitment stuffs. Candace, how are you doing this morning?
I'm good, how are you guys?
Good, good. Uh, do you guys mind if I draw?
No.
I was just saying, you looked out that exit marker like you were ready.
Like usual. Yeah, yeah. Uh, Jeremiah, can you see the board?
We might have to move the owl.
Alright, so, um, oh, just a very, uh, simple view of what we're doing here is we have, um, we're, we're just, we, we, we have the Board of Directors here for the Lake, here, we, 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 um, um, so we're just, we'll try to turn it up a little bit.
Yeah, or you can turn it off too, I just wanna try to do that.
Good. Um, then what we've established, um, mainly through the, the budget processes, how many positions we're allotted, uh, to run our emergency communications team. So, we decided we needed a director, um, and then from there we branched it off into two supervisors. And then we have a total of eight dispatchers. Chelsea brought in that as she's a big fan that they are operators and inspectors, the role of it. Okay, so this gives us a total of eleven employees. Uh, this is what we decided to go ahead and budget for through twenty twenty five to try to hire all these positions. Um, where we're sitting now is we have, you know, dispatchers, I say happy, it's part of it. Um, right now, this time of year, she's out of school and is helping out quite a bit, so we're getting pretty close, as you can see, to filling these roles. And then we assigned two different supervisor roles, uh, to the central service as supervisor for each side of the region, how it kind of rolls out, uh, with the schedule that they have. And then they report to a director, and the director is listed throughout our IG bylaws, is, uh, imports to us. And we're to appoint this person. A quick history, we have appointed one, uh, and that was, uh, a supervisor at the time, providing handful years of experience, was promoted to supervisor, and then was given additional tasks to the director, um, and then we went through that process. And when that person left, we took on additional tasks to try to fill in a lot of those gaps. So where we're sitting now, we don't have a director, but we don't have a supervisor, we just have this one. And then we've turned ourselves into this, uh, managing board. And we've identified, uh, some of the key roles, so we've, gonna kind of dive into job description here. With the Director role, which, um, I think it's fair to say that we believe is a, a very important role here, it's kind of, uh, what holds dispatch together between the Board and supervisor, but we're taking on a lot of those additional tasks. We've identified six areas that we, uh, focused, and we've all taken on, um, a couple of those, uh, different roles. So the first one's training, um, which, uh, Dan takes care of, or, or helps out with. Um, recruitment and retention is the next one, and we have, uh, Jeremiah and Dan over here. Um, policy, Claire and Jeremiah, project management is Jeremiah and myself, uh, oversight, supervision is, um, Dan and myself, and then budget is Jeremiah and myself on that one also. So when it comes to, we don't really wanna dive into the job description specifically line by line today, um, but just wanted to talk about what we're doing there to help identify some of those, um, missing links that we will not have in that director in that role. Experience levels, where we're at right now is, we, we're slowly gaining experience levels, uh, or they're increasing on our dispatch level. We have anywhere from, I'd say, five, uh, excuse me, like, two to approximately six years of experience, um, with our part-time person, and it brings in quite a bit. And we have one of our new hires that's in that five-year range. Um, from a supervision standpoint, this is where we're lacking in experience. We, we have us stepping up to try to manage some of these key roles, and we also have, um, our current supervisor, um, in the supervision of all dispatch right now, um, so she's kind of taking on, uh, the role of being supervisor for everybody, uh, with not a lot of experience with dispatch, and not a lot of experiences of supervising. And just to kind of, you know, display some of the, like, in comparison, we've had some recent conversations with Chatham County, uh, their last director was there for forty years, and their new director's new in the director role, but also runs experiments by coming within and having that development. And as you can see, we just, we just don't have that here with us. Um, so this, I mean, that's just kind of a quick background, uh, what we're doing, as you guys all know. What I wanted to talk today about is, one, continue the conversation of why this is a problem, like, we need to do something about this. Um, and to explore what our different options are. We've attempted to hire the director for quite a while now, and we've had multiple different efforts, September will be two years, uh, which is crazy to think. Um, and we've had, um, a couple of applications come through that were hopeful, and then they just stopped talking to us. And for, for whatever reason, we just, we don't have a lot of feedback on why those didn't work out, uh, but they did it. We made another attempt, uh, increased salaries, uh, salary range, um, offered bonuses, and, uh, still, still no luck with that. So we continue on as a managing board, um, pulling in those extra duties. I, I would say overall, we're doing what we can with our capacity level, but it's not serving to be enough. So, um, we have some different options. I'm suggesting today that we look into the option of a, a temporary, uh, director. Um, and, and I just wanna go through some of the Lake County, uh, options that we have with employee classification options. So, we have a full-time option, which is what our main purpose was, is to try to hire a full-time director, uh, which is anything over thirty hours. Um, we have regular part-time, which is something we haven't explored, which is less, less than thirty hours. Uh, we also have seasonal and temporary employee options. Um, so this, this would be, um, a pre-established time, not more than five months, according to the Lake County handbook. And so this will be saying, we want your help for excellent time. Um, we also have the option of occasional, uh, on-call employee, which I don't think, uh, fits this type of position at all. We're not looking to put anybody on any sort of retainer, and I don't think that would be fitting, we can talk about that if you guys disagree. Um, and then if, if not any of those regular employee type of definitions, then we have the option, um, for an independent consultant. Can't be both, we gotta pick one or the other, uh, which is something we've kind of talked about a little bit with, uh, what Paul rocks the table with, that, uh, company that she was talking about. Um, as for when it comes to recruitment, I think if we explore some of these different options, um, that we will significantly broaden the, the, the applicant pool. Uh, if we have people that are willing to come up and do maybe even a, uh, temporary role, uh, which as defined again, it's no more than five months, but it's a pre-established time. Um, or we do this as a part-time employee, um, with, so part-time and temporary, I think extends our options quite a bit. Um, I also believe that this could recruit somebody with the experience and expertise in dispatching, um, and leadership and management, um, that we're looking for. And again, that's purely hope, there's obviously, uh, no way I can guarantee that, but if we open up these options for hiring somebody, um, I believe that we'll be able to play that director role sooner than later. And we have other options in the works with Chatham County, it's not really their topic today, but we are working other things in case this doesn't work out, um, or this option doesn't produce what, what I'm hopeful for. But that's, that's just kind of the opener there, if you guys wanna do some thoughts, I know, uh, Claire, I appreciate your email, and, and, and I know you've not seen that, um. Yeah, so what do you guys have for that?
So would we, uh, is the vision to still use KRW and just?
Um, I, I'm not bringing that to the table today, um, because of the cost potential, um, you know, they, they quoted us around fourteen thousand dollars. And there's some other costs that could be associated with that, um, so it's a pretty, uh, significant cost. That's, that is laying everything out there though, um, so that is, I can guarantee I didn't think about bringing that up today, but, um.
Cause that certainly does, um, add enticement, I believe, by, uh, listing it under three job qualifications, full-time, part-time, or temporary.
So, and so the question is, do we try that without the investment in KRW now first to see if we get any results by opening it up? Um, or do we try it all at once?
I think, I think that's great, my only concern is our window now is so short with the weather. Cause KR, KRW, I'd suggest that we have it posted with them by now, we're already about June sixteenth.
Yes.
In two months, we'll be seeing snow again.
It's true, it is true.
Aren't you like, horse?
I, we've seen it before. I'd be up here for that. But I think if that's, uh, that is the heavy portion, is to be KRW involved, open up all the options, this is just pulling out all the stuffs all at once. Um, and that's something that we can, you know, put on our, uh, next regular meeting to, to close on if you don't spend the money.
So when is our next regular meeting, July?
Eleven seven.
Okay, cause we could push this out if the majority of the board agrees with these three enticements. And at the next board meeting, we could decide whether or not, is it due to the game what we're doing and push it to KRW for recruitment?
What is our, what have we used through our human resources option to get it out nationally? Is it, what platforms have we put it out there on? Do we email those?
So Jazz HR will have to push it to kind of the big ones, like the Indeed's and all that. Um, Jazz HR is the applicant tracking system the county uses, when we put something on there, it goes out to the big ones. Um, additionally, we paid for, um, Abco and Nena, Nina, Nena, Nina. Uh, one of those was a thirty day, one of those was a sixty day, I can't remember which one was which, um, but we did pay for those, and that was about the hundred dollars total.
You heard on that?
I think we get it for three though, because we're members now.
We weren't members at the time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think now that's, um, that we give a crazy few members, yeah.
Um, yeah, it seems like we've used those resources. So, the reason why I ask that question is, what's, what's the other company gonna do for us more so than, than what we're already doing internally? Cause it's already going out to all these platforms nationally to include everybody looking at Mina in the dispatch world. Um, yeah, you mind talking about your experience?
Uh, I mean, they did great, I'm impressed with the company. Uh, what made the process slow was the city trying to make a decision. Cause I know, it, it, it is comical that I submitted my resume about a year and a half before I got hired, then they hired a recruiting firm. S- I don't know how much they spent, and, uh, they ended up with me as the candidate, so, I think the city wasted their money. They, they could have done, in retrospect, hindsight's twenty twenty, the city could have saved a ton of money, uh, by just doing the process themselves.
And that was prior, that was, that was to recruit a part-time, and Chavez came in here because of that, right? Is that how that worked?
I don't know.
They did that, and then it Chavez.
I think, I think the city administrator became aware that Chavez was available, so, so she reached out to him to be a temporary employee.
Gosh, so this company didn't do that?
No, no, I don't think so. Um, and also, I'm a member of the Colorado Chiefs Police Association, we could advertise with them to, to push it out to more, uh. There must be a Fire Chiefs Association.
Yeah.
Police one, that's it. Oh, police one, everywhere.
Yeah, and that's, and, and so I was there with, um, Chavez when that started, it started off with, uh, a guy named Mike Brown, he was known for just a couple of weeks. Uh, because it was, kind of advertised to him, and it would just be a short time. The same with, uh, Chief Chavez at the time was, uh, told it could take anywhere from a couple of weeks to a couple of months, and they're spending ten minutes here. But tho- those two came by word of mouth, and so if we, if we advertise it as this temporary fill in this gap right now, uh, while we're looking at all our other permanent options, that we, I think the word of mouth will stretch our systems and dispatch.
And I've seen it where tempers come in and they say, you know, this is, this isn't a bad gig, I think, uh, he considered the option, yeah.
The lady that, or the person that retired from Chatham County for forty years, she, are they fully retired? I don't know, I've, um, I don't know her, uh, personally, I don't know if I've ever met her, I don't know if anybody else has.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't know what the personal situation is, uh, but some, somebody, you know, that liked that, that may have retired or has, uh, you know, maybe still a couple of years, they wanna work, or whatever, do you have their contact information, do you do?
I think so, I think I do.
I'm sure we can get it too, yeah. I know, uh, Jeremiah's a contact, he's Nick, the current director down there, so he might be able to help reach out, uh. But it's, yeah, it's surprising to me how much people talk, you know, I know so-and-so, and so-and-so knows so-and-so, and they're looking for something like this.
We all have meetings, like, once, twice a week for different things in that dispatch world. So, there's a lot of contact there, Jennifer Kirkland with PBC, she's very knowledgeable, and who's out there, who's looking for what. I mean, there's a lot of contact in that world, that, just meetings that happen all the time, you know, so, it's a lot of outreach.
Candace, since you're here, you mind if I, uh, pick your brain a little bit? Um, just, I don't know if you've seen or, uh, other examples of this, of maybe at local level, where there was a temporary fill that Lake County has used in recent history? I can't think of one that, that we missed.
No, I, I don't know, cause I'm just to you in this role, to know what we've done historically in that regard.
We, we had interim directors before, and, but that's always within, uh, that I, that I've seen that place.
Yeah. I just think if you did an interim, we'd have to have a discussion about what that looks like, and who has that full thing with, to do that.
Correct, yeah, and we discussed that in the last meeting, and that's kind of what we're, why we're meeting today, is to look externally.
Yeah.
And that's what it feels like, um, our best options right now. Capacity is the, the keyword that seems to be floating around, uh, we have anybody internally who has the capacity, uh, to, to do that job. Um, and that's why we're talking about this today, is, and then looking at the county options to, um, it seems like if we advertise this as a, as a part-time hire or a temporary hire, um, that we can expand options quite a bit.
Yeah.
That would really make it enticing. Jeremiah, what are your thoughts?
Um, my main question, and you guys may have gone over this, I was on the phone for a second, I apologize, but, um, would this be in addition to the contracted work that we spoke about, or would this be a workplace?
Uh, we did bring that up actually, so I'm glad you did. Turned it to a consultant? Yeah, the consultant that, uh, the type of work that Paula brought in, I think is still beneficial. It's another, uh, hefty bill for us to invest in, but it also gives us that starting point that you talked about, uh, where this person can come in and really dig into, to our systems, and see what we're lacking, and give those suggestions, so. It does give, whether it's, uh, full-time, part-time, temporary, whatever that, whoever that person is, uh, gives them a good starting point. And I used myself as a reference, when the county hired, uh, their consultant, um, prior to, uh, appointing me, I had, had, had kind of a to-do list. Already day one, uh, which was super helpful, so, um, that, that would be something that I think we, um, talked a little more today on, uh, some of those details, uh, and then potentially get it on a regular meeting for a vote if we decide to spend that money on a consultant also.
And then, kind of expanding on that too, like, I, I have no problem with trying to get stuff done while we don't have a director. My worry is that we're, we're gonna spend money on a contract, spend money on interim, and then also still need to spend money on KRW.
That's correct.
Right.
But this, with the budget that's established, with eight positions, one supervisor and a director, we should have capacity in our budget to take some of these actions.
Could you clarify for me? Could the director, um, potentially be part-time with other duties? Or do you need somebody in that role who's full-time? Just trying to get creative about how to fill the position?
Yeah. When you say other duties, do you mean like a, just a s- a separate job?
Yeah, I wonder if there's any, so sometimes when we really need to cover a position, like in, for public health and DHS, they're two completely different departments.
Right.
It's sometimes we can utilize a person of a skill set that fills a need, you know? And just split their pay out of the department, and so just a person who has a hard time filling the position. Is there an opportunity to, I mean, I could get creative and see what would make sense, but if there's an opportunity to make it in recruiting, from a monetary standpoint, or, uh, what their duties to employ, it is something.
I think it was just in a, I know, I was, I just thought of this, that's what I thought. So I've been working with Kathy Sluski, he has, he was an officer for ten plus years. He knows fire, he knows all radials, he's very knowledgeable in this stuff, and how policies work, how SOPs work, how all of this stuff works. I don't know, I'm just gonna go up there.
Yeah, I think that's, making a point of bringing up, is somebody like that, um.
He is very good at all that stuff, you know, just by seeing what he knows, and he's been here for a while already.
Yeah, if we can put him in a copy machine and make another one, that'd be great, but his capacity as an officer.
That's what I was, that's what I was thinking, is his capacity to do, because he is involved in a lot of things.
Oh, he's unemployed right now, so, yeah, and it's not.
Is he on fire too? Doesn't he have a?
He was on, no, he wasn't on fire, he went through our program, he was a law enforcement, he was a, over ten years.
But doesn't he have another job here? I thought he had two jobs for some reason.
He, uh, he works for, um, just ever so often, the ambulance service over in, like, Anderson County.
Okay.
See, I think to that point, we can, I think it's really hard to identify an, an exact number, but in those situations, we should probably establish what a minimum part-time level would be. So if we hired somebody part-time and said, give us an hour a week, we're probably not gonna see a lot of ch- change happen, or, or receive the help that we need if we're only getting one hour a week. But what's the answer? I don't, I don't have that exact answer, but I think we can still say, you know, maybe it's fifteen or twenty hours a week is what we need there. And, and so if we have an option like that, saying, hey, can you dedicate fifteen hours a week, or twenty hours a week, ten hours a week? And draw the line there.
I guess what I wondered is, if it's hard to hire someone not full-time, could we make, like, a full-time position? That's like so much percent is dedicated to this, and then another percent is dedicated to another area? To make it work really?
Uh, yeah, I also, um, I think it's.
So it might, you might not be able to get someone to do the job you want, just part-time, they might need a full-time job to actually be able to afford to do the job. So I wonder if the job we're posted has a percentage towards this, and then a percentage towards another area that's, probably someone's skill set. I need to fill, yeah, um, could that potentially be a selling point, so that we still get some, you sprayed all the things you need, but could actually afford to take positions, and part-time positions are so hard to take, cause you're like, I just can't afford to take a half a salary and live here.
I wonder, uh, real quick, Paula, if, um, but I wonder in that example, if we feel like the person, uh, meets the requirements that we're looking for, is the right person for the job, and they want full-time, why would we not just offer them the full-time job? Is my thought, because it's a decent paying position. Uh, unless we think that they would rather do something else, that they bring these skills and they wanted to buy their time up. That is exactly what we want, yeah. You know, there's something, I mean.
Now, we're looking for a pretty particular skill set.
I guess, I guess my question is, what do you guys feel that dispatch needs most right now? What, what do you guys see to get it, that you want that person to do?
Uh, yeah, and I know you kind of missed the opening, you had talked about that.
Yeah, I did, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, we talked about those, like, it's basically everything we're trying to do, but we have limited capacity to give attention to, right? Overs- oversight, training, um, policy, budget, all those types of things. You know, those are specific things for a director to, um, you know, engage in, in an agency. Those are the things that I think we're lacking. Or having the greater capacity to do so, cause you're varied also through, throughout your day-to-day, as supervisor and supervisor. So, uh, do we have Jackie on our agenda in order for her to do the same, um, a presentation on what her consulting form, from can you for us? I mean, I know that she gave us a, a, a quote, but I, I'd like to be able to ask her more questions about, with specific questions. Like, what is the overall greater capacity of that, of that business that she owns? Is there somebody sitting in the wing saying, oh, is there a part-time, you know, retiree, or somebody wants to step in and do more than just what she's been up to for us? Don't know, don't know those, that's interesting. Uh, I don't think we've built the agenda for the eleventh quite yet, uh, but I know she's offered to join us.
I, I did not, I stayed in September.
Do you have, or who are your emails and how you touch her?
It's a good idea, let me get it on the agenda. How do, how do you guys feel about establishing, uh, what our ranges, we desire full-time, we're willing to go down how many hours? What works for me, is clear for me, is to establish the amount of hours per week that we need as a, as a bare minimum.
Twenty-four would be nice.
I was gonna say twenty, but yeah, twenty-four, right? That is twenty-ish.
So on the sixth of June, I sent it, her.
Oh, those are just, yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine, starting with that twenty, twenty hours a week, and, uh, call that a, a minimum requirement for what can do, or search to part-time.
Yes.
Uh, then I, I think we can also advertise it as a temporary position too, uh, keeping it under that five mark.
Yes.
Candace, from a county operation standpoint, just following county handbook on the definition of those roles and responsibilities, we seem on track, right?
That's fine, I think we'll just, you know, work with Zoe to make sure she knows it's just a temporary.
You know how to advertise this?
Position, yeah, advertise it as it's, you know.
Yeah. Are these separate job listings?
I think if you're changing the terms of the posting, then yeah, it would be, because I honestly don't, I haven't looked at what's supposed to bring out, but I would imagine it doesn't specify the number of hours or that it means.
Right, no, that's one.
So we did for an hour, yeah, so we can amend that a bit, but.
Just the other question is the hourly position for this, hourly rate in this position?
Yeah.
And clearly, I mean, I would think no, no benefits of course, you make sure that's in there, because we don't have one.
Are there some benefits for the regular part-time? Somebody's hired.
Depends on how many hours you work.
Because it's gonna be up to thirty-two, isn't it?
Yeah.
Thirty.
Thirty here, thirty-two.
Yeah, it's just thirty, right? It's thirty. Okay. Oh, yeah. And Claire, you mentioned you knew somebody that might be interested in something like this, that you reached out by chance?
Uh, she took the job with PPRO and.
Oh, okay. Um, and one of my requests from the board and everybody in this room actually is, is to do what Claire did in that situation, is to reach out to people that you know who may know people. You know, I've had conversations with Jeff Streeter, um, who was the director for the Jeff Tom, who's the communication center, you know, just reach out to somebody like that, say, hey, here's what we're doing, do you know anybody? And that we just all take a little bit of a, a personal effort and pushing out some, some requests for somebody you know that may be connected. That may get some traction, that way to, uh, put it out to everybody in my boardroom and for them to push it out as well. And I'll do, I'll do that.
So regular part-time is thirty hours a week for us. Sorry, I just looked for them. Um, they are eligible for needs of leave.
Okay.
I think that's about it.
So Candace, I can get with Zoe and say, we're, we're gonna repost this position, uh, we're gonna pursue, still, I think there's still a, a full-time option, but if we, like, uh, or, or would Zoe answer all these questions? You don't have to know the answer. Uh, if you wanna track part-time with the option for full-time, um, and you can describe in that single listing on what that breaking point is, what the benefits split up would be, or should those be separate listings?
I think she'll probably do two separate listings, since it was a goals first, we do that with a couple of different things, where we're not sure what our applicant pool would look like opposed to different positions and see which one gets the better set of responses and just kind of.
Okay, I can definitely see that the temporary position, that's one where it says that it's, uh, there's no benefits, that it's a temporary position. But then what that, what it could come down to now is the, uh, pay range for that. I, that's, that would equal some sort of change in pay range, if one has the hourly. Two, since there's no benefits that the county's paying for that, that could potentially grow that pay range a little bit? Is that fair to say, Candace? Or is that his own question also?
If we have the money for the pay range?
Yeah, if the pay range grows because there's no benefits associated, so if the hourly rate, we're offering somebody a temporary role and just an hourly rate. And there's no benefits that the county's paying here. Does that give us the opportunity to expand the pay range a little bit, lower it?
Oh, sure, because you wouldn't be, so when we look at what it costs for an employee, we'll get like the total amount across the board. So, yeah, I do think you probably could get away with a higher hourly rate, but if you think you're gonna have that person come in at an hourly rate transitioned to full-time, you just have to be really clear that what if they do transition to full-time, it's not based on a higher than what they were getting hourly rate, does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Because you don't wanna set us up to not be able to fund the position, but sure, I get it, you don't have benefits and it's really part-time. Higher hourly rate might help you entice that person, I just think you have to be really clear in the hiring process, if you move full-time, you have the additional benefits, so those people forget your benefits have a, a, a lot of costs associated with them. So, just making sure we're really clear.
Mm.
Good. And it seems like you thought it, you're a budget layer, so you'll be.
Um, so what I'll do is, uh, start playing around with numbers and figuring out what those hourly rates would look like. And, um, I can get with Zoe and start working on job descriptions and get this posted. Um, if there's any concerns about me doing this before the regular meeting, we can hold this off for a regular meeting vote if that was necessary. I know it's, we're discussing just different recruitment efforts. It's a major decision, you guys feel like we should wait for a vote on, I'm happy to do that also.
So if you get someone, will you be training them?
What do you mean?
Because there's a lot, somebody just doesn't come in and knows all of our stuff, what we have and what we work with and all that detail, so, wait.
Hey Paula.
Yeah.
The, the, the hope would be is that, this would, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong here, but at least my hope would be, this would be somebody who has experience in a dispatch center, um, and, and in this sort of role, right? So, this isn't really a role that would need training per se before they start, yes, they would have to learn newer systems, but that would be part of their role, would be to talk to, we would talk to the dispatchers, learn the system, see where things may be improved, like, that would be part of their job, right? Uh, and, and that sort of thing, so it's, it's not like a, uh, you know, yes, they may learn, they may need to learn flex, or they may need to learn specific things with dispatching with us, but to start from how to dispatch, as you already hopefully have experience running a dispatch center, that would be the hope, right, so, coming in and, and kind of already having some already having some experience in this, not necessarily needing training before they start, does that make a little more sense?
Um, yeah, I, I guess so, I guess it's just like, my thing that I hope you guys would ask, do you have training in the new nine, new generation 911, do you know what those aspects are? Do you know where we're going with that? Because those are things that they should know, and I hope you guys are, or will be asking those kind of questions. You know, and how much info do you have on it and, um, stuff like that with our, the regulations of the PUC, regulations with the ETC, what we have to do with that. Those kind of things I hope you guys are asking so that it is a good start for them to come on and do those things. You know, the regulations that we have for everything.
Yeah.
And that we need, you know, on this, I think that's what asks those questions.
And that, that's different than training though, it's, uh, we're, you know, we're transitioning to a hiring process.
Right.
Your initial question is, are we gonna train?
Right, well, that's, yeah, just with the training aspect though, to know those things. Because then if they do, then you really don't need to train anything that much, do you know what I mean? They kind of play hand in hand with that. So, I would just go with that.
That's right, Claire, you have anything? Any thoughts? It's just, it's gonna still be a difficult task. So, I, I really just think that we just need to be aware of that regardless of how much information we're trying to have, but we're careful. I mean, KRW, like what she was talking about. At some point, we may have to reconsider that. With this last ditch effort on our end, through our human resources and everything, all the platforms we're pushing that on, or the amount, all of that still fails, then we may have to invest. That's my thought, so. I really don't think we're able to get somebody at least interested in, in the part-time. Jeremiah, any other thoughts?
Not currently, sir.
Paula? What a place she's going to?
We had to take a call.
I, I guess I'm on the side of it, I'm at two over, I'm at, I'm at, you know, to all the dispatch centers and all that. Seeing if anyone is available, and then I go to trainings.
Yeah.
Put it out there, so.
And that's my hope is if we open up the options, that there might be interested in the temporary or part-time role.
Mm-hmm. I, I guess the biggest thing is just having, if they're not from here, or we didn't put them, the same opening.
Right.
The same opening that we, we do with all the time.
Right, yeah, all those concerns, for me.
But if it was temporary, oh, I have my basement.
Would does Mary and Dale go to, uh, meet in a training?
Uh, they go to it.
In July? That's a good, um, course to network.
Yes. Almost every time.
It is for the.
Doesn't it probably be up here, you go from that, somewhere you post by people?
Because everybody attending that has some kind of training or supervisory role of some kind, they may, they may know somebody.
No, because they're not there.
If, if they can talk also, don't just let them know that we're, we're a director. Because that's going to. July, when, eleven?
Sixteen.
Sixteen?
Sixteen, I believe, sixteen. Just accept it.
If the city view wanting to have discussions, I'm using over in that school street, if we need it, to introduce someone.
Absolutely, yeah. Housing would be available, either there or at the station. Uh, Laurie has made it very clear that anybody that needs housing for in Lake County, is allowed. Yeah, it's huge actually, if we open up and somebody accepts it as a part-time role, and we're at twenty hours a week, that could be just one night a week they spend up here living in Denver. And they're okay with that, the two-day deployment they do once a week. All right, Candace, what do you, what do you have for us?
Um, I don't think anything other than making sure we get with Zoe, get things posted that you need. Try to get it felt, figure out if we can and need to use third-party for to cover.
Yeah.
You know, to provide the bandwidth that we need, um, and then. I think that we really, really have the posting out there for a while and just absolutely cannot fill it when we have a different discussion about the best way to make sure that we're covering 911, so we don't set ourselves up to fail any further, which is my concern.
Yeah, I'm gonna put all our eggs in this basket, to that point, we're also up to G conversation with Jake County, um, we may hopefully to see, just you know, especially with construction coming up, that was one of your questions earlier, like, what's our backup plan? They slice a wire while they're swinging hammers in this building, what do we do, so, uh, making sure that we have a backup center. Um, are we established, so we're working that angle also. Who's, who's doing that?
Uh, Jeremiah and I.
Oh, you're up. Um, yeah, so hopefully we can make some updates to the, uh, the July eleventh meeting. Um, but for July, July eleventh, we, I think we can, if you wanna reach out to, uh, Jackie, or, or you're going to. And, uh, so you can get her on the agenda, um. And I'm fine with bringing KRW back up on the agenda, especially if we're able to see how, you know, next, uh, few weeks go with a, a slight change in our job posting, when more options, if we feel like after three weeks we're still getting nothing, or we have to entertain what, or what KRW looks like again. I imagine when quotes expired, um, so I'd be happy to reconnect with them to see if we can get an updated quote, script of work from them.
Are you looking to hire a director, a previous director, or just anyone who's worked in a dispatch?
Uh, I'm, probably largely depends.
The only reason why I say this is because from the meetings I've gone to, like, from Paula, she went in the dispatch center for twenty-plus years. When she got into the director position, she said it took her two or three years to even get what she knew about how to be a director. That was the consensus from all of them, so, um, even with, um, Nick down there, he's still learning everything that has to go, even though he had been in the dispatch center.
Correct.
So, so it's a big tradition, so that's why I'm asking, like, what you guys, what you're looking for.
We'll just have to cross that bridge with qualifications if we have any interest.
Let's just see. There. He has on this one, the hit and run.
Same. Same, well, that's all I had, if you guys have anything else, we can close this out. All right, well, it's, uh, nine forty-seven AM, and we're gonna close this reception out, thanks, guys.
Bye, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Jeremiah, feel better.
Thanks, man, I appreciate it.